Ian.
Here.
Richard.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
And Sean.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to start with standing, saying the pleasure of allegiance. Robert, will you lead us in that, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deacon Weir, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Thank you. Dear Lord, help us to make good decisions tonight that benefit the community and hold the community together, looking out for each other, seeing what's going on across the nation with these storms and everything. When it comes down to it, people are good. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Before we get started with approval of the minutes, I have a couple, I want to start with announcements that before us tonight, we have two ordained deacons that were ordained on Sunday. A lot of hard work went into it. Congratulations both of you guys. Would also like for Robert, having announced that him and Darla, Darla is now a, the woman representative for the Lincoln Township for the Republican Citizens Committee. Congratulations Darla. And Darla and Robert are both alternate delegates for, please go ahead.
For US Congressional Elections District 26.
Very good. Also, this week, last week, went to league state conferences and Sidney Lynn Valley is officially a Republican delegate, so congratulations guys. With that, I'd like to move forward with number one, approval of the minutes. If I could get the approval of the last meeting minutes, please.
Motion to approve of September 23rd, 2020, 2024 meeting minutes.
Second.
Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, move to number two, approval of special meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the special meeting minutes. It was on October 3rd, 2024.
Second.
Conversation. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to number three, clerk's report. Mindy's out sick. She's sick the better part of last week. Still worked most of the week, and she but she came back Friday and worked, and then she's sick again today. So she's been to the doctor, and we're trying to get her better before we continue just to keep passing this around up here at City Hall. We've been doing that for about six weeks now. So I hope Mindy gets better. She's in our prayers and, and get better, Mindy. Okay, I'll entertain the motion to approve the vouchers.
Motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of $101,753 and nine cents.
I'll second.
Conversation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you go. Oh, it's also been brought to my attention, counsel, we need everybody to be sitting up. We need to be speaking clearly. Jenny was trying to prepare the minutes today for the special meeting. Mindy being sick ran us late, and with that, she says that Mike seemed to work fine. We just, we'll make an effort to speak clearer so that she can, so that it could be understood. So if we're not understanding it and trying to review the recording, I'd be assured that probably the people who are watching us, trying to listen to us, are having the same problem. So, and with that being said, we have a sewer report from my page, number four. Do we have any questions? Okay, let's move to number five, nuisance building and codes report. Steve, what do you got for us, sir?
So far in 2024, we've had 208 permits submitted. Out of that 180 were approved, 121 still open. Inspection this last month had moved on 54 inspections. Year to date was 366. And as far as the nuisance goes, we only had three supply letters go out. One of those for a skid shed firm at home, one was an RV approach and easement, and the other one for a junk vehicle.
Okay. Steve, a lot of hard work goes into this. We appreciate it. We appreciate your activity, staying busy, and people out there know that you're present, and I would thank you very much. Counsel, have any questions?
The new electrical service or upgrades, is that for new construction, or is part of that for camping lots?
It's about some of the pedestals, temporarys, RVs, et cetera, and new homes.
Okay. What, do you know the split on that, which?
I don't. I'd say more so on temporaries and pedestals for RV than homes.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, we have public safety report, number six. Cory?
Yeah, my report, unless you have any questions about anything to add to it.
Counsel, any questions? We ever discover who's in car parks down there at the corner of Belong to?
No.
At the corner of Buellerie and 2400 down here, we've got a bunch of front end car parks there. Looks like from a small car. But Cory, Department County, nobody has any record of an accident, but there's a bunch of car parks there, so that may work, so. All right, any, no other questions? Let's move to number seven, resolution and ordinances. We had just approved a multi-licure license, and with approving that, Mindy, as we were going through the multi-licure license, she had observed that those licenses were a lot of a generic type of license that we just adopted from the state. And she is offering that maybe we go through this and, and make some corrections in it so that the application suits us, you know, instead of just a general format. So this would be your first knowledge of this, but as we submit this to you and put it in front of you, Mindy not being here tonight, more specific about this, it just gives us the opportunity to look at it, review it, and, and make some recommendations when we discuss it again.
I did speak to her about it. There are several things in our ordinance that were optional from the proposal, from the legal municipalities, that they had it listed as optional, but we adopted it in our ordinance that just really didn't fit our community. We don't really have an issue with public duty and such as were some of the things that were in our ordinance, so just a little clean up to make it better suited for Lynn Valley, and I think it's based on lawrences, which I understand you've got a college town, you're going to have a little different rules, so.
Counsel, if we look real close, go down to under number 11A where it says City Hall cameras, I'd like you to remove that from your agenda. That was not, we're not, we're not prepared to address it yet, and when it does come time to discuss city cameras, it'll need to be an executive session conversation. Okay, because we have, not only do we have cameras up here at City Hall, but we have them over at the fire station, the police station and stuff, so, you know, basically, the conversation at this point is how do we improve and how can we put them all under the watchful eye of Cory? Because the ones here at City Hall, Cory has to Cory has to go find those cameras, basically, so he just, it's not as simple for him to just pull them up under his camera app, and he's in. You know, Cory actually has to go into the app and open it all up, and there's got to be a quicker way for Cory to be able to monitor, survey, and all of those things. Okay, I would last the counsel. I need a motion to go into executive session regarding Cora and Koma, and it's illegal. Under legal conversation. It will be for 10 minutes. It's 10 after 6:00 right now. We'll return, now it's 11 after 6:00 right now, and we'll turn at 21 after 6:00.
Motion to move to legal executive session regarding Koma and Cora to return at 6:21.
I'll second that.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number eight, let's talk about the town hall meeting. We have a town hall meeting scheduled for October 19th. That's next Saturday at 10 o'clock, right after the POA board meeting.
Website's at 10:30.
Yeah, 10:30. 10:30?
Yeah, 10:30.
Okay, I apologize, 10:30 after the POA board meeting. It is going to be an update on both the water and the sewer project. B&amp;G will be there. Again, the community's looking forward to an update. And we've got about everything accomplished. You know, easements are about wrapped up and we're ready to move toward bid letting. So with that, with a little luck, I think we're positively moving the right way. Also, so the council knows, is we've scheduled a meeting, I believe, for October 29th.
28.
28th.
Thank you.
For Lacyne. It's an update on the water purchase agreement that we have with them. It's 29th.
29th, yeah.
Okay. And B&amp;G will be there.
When is that?
So, you know, our water agreement consisted of a period of time that extended through 2026 for us to start making our purchases from Lacyne. So we're still well within the timeframe. They, it's just tight for an update. You know, we haven't sat down with them in over a year.
Is that in the evening?
Pardon?
Is that in the evening?
No, sir, that will be at 1:30 in the afternoon at their seat hall. So.
That's on a Wednesday or something, right?
It's, uh.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It's on a Tuesday. Lawyers weren't invited. We weren't going to turn this into a council deal. It was just going to be a, it's just going to be a quick update. Richard and I were both able to make those dates and we'll give you an update after that.
Yeah, just for everybody else's input, we tried it like a half dozen dates or more and it couldn't get hooked up. So we tried to do it this afternoon and that didn't happen either, so.
So everybody has busy schedules. And with that, I know that we have a sewer update. Councilman Don?
Yes, I believe Richard brought back that out in the last meeting. He said the state had the drawings now, and he was correct, that the state does have the drawings now. It's going to be between four and six weeks. It may be sooner, they don't know, but.
They had indicated that that timeline is going much quicker than water projects.
Yeah, it's a much simpler project, so they can get through it pretty fast. You know, then after the, I'm sure there'll be comments on the drawings and there'll be a time period where those are taken care of and then they submit to USDA for approval and then we can go into the bidding stage.
Any questions regarding water project? Anybody in the audience? Any questions regarding sewer project, council? With that, I'd like to ask for the council to go into a five-minute executive session regarding the water sewer project and trade secret, the water and sewer project. We are right now at 6:27. We'll return at 6:27, 5, 6:32.
Motion to move to an executive session for trade, legal trade discussion, to return at 6:27?
Correct.
6:32.
6:32.
Trade secret discussion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, check. Aye, aye.